Zach, if you've got a flag, you can put it on the screen for people. Yeah, we can do that. We're gonna put one on the screen for you, Zach. Can you see that, everybody? And I'll just start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic, the nation, one nation under God, in which we live.
Thank you. And now I'll ask Mr. Waters if he would do an invitation course. He's up in here.
My precious and beloved and faithful, all you have done for us so much, and capable, who will sustain the change, and those who speak, who with us is God's witness, and all his attention, and all that he has.
Thank you. And now I'd like to mention a list of people who have passed on from our town. And we'll call them in silence for Ann Webb, John Provataro, Ross Oost, Rolf Schmidt, Ron Waters, and Francis Waters. And I cannot say enough for Commissioner Waters, how much we feel for your family, definitely praying for you and thinking about you. But if we could, just have a moment of silence for those. Thank you. All right, we're gonna have a... Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. I would like to add a little item to the agenda, which is sort of a last-minute thing, is a proclamation for the library. I would like to insert that at... That would be number seven. After the presentation of the Stormwater Designation, we will do the proclamation. Do I have a...
Mayor, could I add something, please?
Yes.
Due to the fact that I am, and I ask for the board's patience and consideration here, some of you know I'm kinda remote here in this meeting. I have no electricity, sketchy service at best. I would like to move the agenda item for the knuckle boom truck as far to the front as I can. I think it's an important item, and in the event that I may lose a signal and not be able to regain, I would like to move that up so I could at least participate in that one item, if I could.
With that, I'll ask for a motion to move line item number 11 up to number eight, which will be right after the library. Would that be okay?
That's fine, as close to the front as I can get it.
All right. So would I have a motion to accept those two changes to the agenda? Mr. Waters has a dinner question, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, and I will do a roll call vote, so we can make sure everybody is heard. Mr. Waters? Don?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
I just got on, it wouldn't hook up the first time.
Okay, we've just made a motion to accept the agenda with adding that item above the library. Okay, good. And Commissioner?
Yes.
All right, so approved. Now we move on to the consent agenda, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Waters, do I have a second?
King's second.
Okay, thank you, King. Now, we'll also do another roll call vote. Commissioner Naylott?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters?
Thank you.
Please, if I can get y'all... You're not a board member, please cut your mics off. Now, we're gonna do the public comments for the people that did not have the ability to get online to comment. So we have eight people that are signed up, so I'm gonna start bringing them in. They will come to this podium, they will address the board, and then they will leave, and the next person will come in. So please bear with me for a moment while I go get everybody lined up and ready to go. All right, hold on to your first up. You're number one, you're number one. And then, keep it out. Then there's Bob, Bob, Wayne, and then Susan, and I think that's it. Right, and you're a electioneering. Good evening, Mr. Waters.
Good evening, Mayor Baker, thank you for having me.
And please feel free to start when you're ready.
Thank you, sir. I just have a couple of items. I realize this is a public comment and not to hear. So I see further down, discussion of knuckle boom truck and budget amendment. And I fervently hope that the town is considering buying a truck that will enable the town to make more frequent guard waste pickups. I am 1,000% in favor of that. It would be a wonderful thing for this town to pick up more than twice a year. I've asked every, every time, please pick up your waste truck. And the next thing is, I had a correspondence from Zach Stepi about the no-wake buoys. Several of Delanda on Neptune have committed to spend thousands of dollars to put in living shorelines because boats rip up and down the waterfront, and they're eroding our property, even to the point where our bulkheads are exposed. There's no marsh whatsoever in front of some of our bulkheads, and we're gonna pay thousands of dollars. Coastal Federation has a contract to this, put in oyster shells. We hope that the marsh will grow within those. So Zach sent me a picture of buoys that we have, and I have enlisted various people who said they'll put them out. If the town will allow us to help, we'll put the bulkheads in the water in Akron. We would appreciate being able to recommend where they should go. That's all, thank you so much, God bless you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do I have to wear this?
You can take it off.
Thank God. Hi, I'm Dana Luther, and I live at Loma Linda Drive, it's on the corner of Benito and Loma Linda over here in Cape Carteret. And I just had a few questions about the rezoning and the purpose for it, purpose and need. Right now, I believe it is zone 10, which allows for office space, if I'm not mistaken, is that correct? You're not sure what the designated uses are for B10 zoning? Oh, okay. I got you. Typically, in my... Okay, well, I'm opposed at this point because I have questions regarding the need to rezone from B10 to B20. Due to the fact that under 20 zoning, if I'm not mistaken, uses such as a restaurant is possible. And then that opens up the door to traffic and how they ingress or egress from that property. And I specifically don't want a ton of traffic coming down Benito to make their way back over to Manatee and going by my house and everyone else's house. I'm sure has that same concern on that area. So that would be my concern, is what is the purpose and need of it? If what they want to do is build an office building, and the current zoning allows for that use, then I don't understand what the purpose and need is for rezoning to be 20. And that's my concern. Okay, thank you.
Well, I didn't know I was here for public comment, but first and foremost, I wanted to offer our condolences, Mr. Waters, to your family. I know we're going through a tough time. I'm here for rezoning, I didn't know that I was gonna be here for public comment, but thank you for what you're doing. But since I am here, I would like to see more leak and debris pickup around the town on a more regular basis. And I know you're in a difficult position, so thank you for your service, that's about it. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Waters, how are you doing?
We're well, how are you, sir?
I'm doing good. First, I want to express condolences to Jeff Waters and the loss of his parents. I extend that from both myself and my wife. When the agenda came out Thursday, several of us that live in the immediate area of this proposed property, I don't know if the closed section deals with the property, the Old Prairie Landing, or not. It's pure speculation on my part and all of my neighbors that that's what it's about. But of course, we don't know because it's closed session. But obviously, with the description, it stands to reason as possibly as given what we know. What I want to do real briefly is, we have brought up a petition for the residents of the immediate area and as well as our Bay Shore Park. And I want to read that to you and then leave you with a copy of it, okay? Petition in opposition to the town of Cape Carteret purchasing, leasing, or otherwise procuring property known as track 2 Old Prairie Landing at the end of the road, otherwise known as parcel. And I won't read off the parcel number because it's in the document, I'll leave you. Tax ID number the same way. Owned by South by West LLC, has a tax value of $201,000. Other side property owners under arrest since the Bay Shore Parks subdivision, including those residing on Lejeune Road, given notice to town of Cape Carteret. Specifically to the town board commissioners that we are opposed to the above noted proposed action by the town to purchase said property. If as proposed in the drawing that was prepared by the town, which I've attached, and this is how we're even aware of it, is the property owner provided this drawing to one of the neighbors whose property adjoins this area. That's how we even know about it, it's from the... Oh seller. If as proposed in the drawing prepared by the town, the property will be used either now or in the future for a public boat ramp, indoor lease, or rental of kayaks, park, and boardwalk, and there is not large enough to support the traffic, parking congestion that would be associated with activities. The additional traffic will pose a problem for the property owners whose residents has faced this property, imposing a significant problem for this since on Lejeune Road and adjoining streets in the Bay Shore community. Roads in Bay Shore are in poor condition and not properly maintained or repaired at a timely basis. As a matter of fact, the road I live on, Lejeune, closed today for repairs. It's been under repair now for almost three months. The property values of those residents in the area would be negatively, as well as those within the Bay Shore community itself. There's already a town park and pier in the immediate area, as well as a proper maintained private boat. History, both recent and past, has killed really the power of the town to maintain and support existing infrastructure such as roads and parks. The town cannot afford the cost of property, given other monetary issues and commitments facing the town, such as the trail. That's a big commitment there. In addition, the purchase of the land is just the beginning cost. The existing bulkhead is in total disrepair and will need to be replaced. The bottom area of the waterway is full of debris left in the Old Prairie Landing from 50 years ago. The entire area will need to be dredged. The cost of boardwalks, repairs, the existing structure, as well as the cost of the ramp itself, would probably double the cost of the initial investment of the land. For the reasons stated above, the interest of the Bay Shore community, I fix our names and signatures to this petition. And once again, no names on this petition, but it is being circulated, and I wanted to get it along with what we were given, the proposed drawing that was prepared, of the conceptual plan that was prepared by the town manager. So I just leave this here? Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all who are virtual, and take care, be safe.
All right, once again, if you're all, please turn your microphone off until you're asked to do.
Okay, I'm gonna step back because that's disturbing. So I just started on the planning board recently, and the vote that you're taking today is regarding what happened to the planning board this past week. And Brad Rich wrote an article about it, and it had my name in it and a couple of people called. So I just felt like I wanted to make sure I was passing on what was related to me. So after several residents read the article, they are concerned about strip malls, they are concerned about traffic, and they are concerned about encroachment into a resident neighborhood. You know, this week I started asking about the land use, the fund document. So I started reading into the land use, and it turned out that that residential encroachment has been a concern since at least 2007, when that article was, when that document was written by Wood. So I just felt like I wanted to bring it up because people brought it up to me. And I think there is, I think we're at a point where we absolutely need to start looking at some type of documentation so that residents know how far these... Any commercial activity is gonna be moving into the residential neighborhoods. In fact, something just also came up about the harbor right, because right now, apparently, there's a sign out front that looks like... So I just think that's probably a good idea for us to take a look at, you know, some way to let the residents know that we're not gonna be encroaching into, you know, into neighborhoods. Okay? Thank you.
It's all right. I appreciate, I appreciate that. Okay, again, my questions to you were, why do we need this change, first of all? And what is the difference between a B13 and a B20? Yeah, B13 to a B20, why? Are these gonna get answered now, or no? Okay. Okay. Okay, and when I talked to you earlier, Mayor, you mentioned that it was, that they wanted to put another office there. Then why is there a need to change the plot that the office is already on, it's a B13? So there's no need to change the residential to a B20, or to change the 106 address to a B20, if it's already okay for an office. If we allow it to go to B20, at some point, it can then be a restaurant, is that correct? Okay, but why the need to make it a B20? And again, I'll state, there are people online, right? I'll state the reason I'm here, I live at 301 Benita, and if I didn't walk my dog down to the end of the street, I wouldn't know this was even part of the meeting. Because there were no signs out front, no signs at the front of the office, no signs at the front of the other residential property, they're on the back, where nobody goes. And I just spoke to a woman who spoke earlier, asked some questions. She lives right up the street from that, didn't know the signs were there. So why were the signs put there? It just, you know, throws a red flag up, so that's why I'm here. All right? So will you get back to me with answers, or? Okay, and I'll be able to see the answers on?
Yes, you'll be able to follow it.
Well, I won't be able to follow it tonight, because I'm not set up for it. When is this gonna be voted on? Okay, so you'll, there'll be more time for public input? Okay, all right, good, well, I appreciate it. You know, yeah, okay, good, thank you.
Thanks, sir. So that was it for the sub-comment, other than I did have the email on the read. I'm assuming yes. So she writes, there's absolutely no objection to Mr. McLean relocating an office on lot 118. I suspect several neighbors, our only concern is the future of urban parking lots of 100 block that remain residential, above old Cape program, paint black, less neighborhood, for the city when the area is first developed. Thank you, Elaine and Rock, looking at 116 Mary. And with that, that is the end of the comment, and I'll turn it over to Zach for the presentation of the Storm Ready Designation. Did you hear me okay, Zach?
Can't hear you back. All right, can I hear you now?
Back in the area?
Sorry, the computer off. All right, so I'll go ahead and, Eric, the National Weather Service, who's joining us this evening. Eric, do you want me to make you a presenter, or do you just wanna stay?
Yeah, I'll just say a couple of words, and then go ahead, and then when I'm done, to present the letter, you can make me a presenter, and I've got it full screen as well.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead, if it's okay with you, Zach and the board?
Yeah, please.
All right. So my name is Eric Hayden, I'm a meteorologist with the National Weather Service Office in Newport. We're gonna talk briefly about what Storm Ready is and how the town just got certified. Storm Ready is part of our Weather Ready Nation mission, is to help prepare communities for increasing vulnerability due to extreme weather and water events. Americans live in the most severe weather-prone country on earth. About 98% of presidentially declared disasters are actually weather-related, leading to about 500 deaths per year and about $15 billion in damage. The Storm Ready program helps arm American communities with the communication and safety skills that are needed to save lives and property, before, during, and also after the event itself. It helps community leaders strengthen local safety programs. These communities are better prepared to save lives from the onslaught of severe weather through advanced planning, education, and awareness. Just to make note, we commend the town of Cape Carteret for this achievement. To meet this criteria, they had to establish the following standards. You had to have a 24-hour warning point and emergency operations center. You had to have more than one way to receive severe weather warnings, and also communicate that to the local neighborhoods. You had to create a system to monitor local weather conditions. You had to promote the importance of public readiness through community seminars. And finally, you had to develop a formal hazardous weather plan. This took time and dedication to meet these standards, and we greatly appreciate these efforts. No community is storm-proof, but Storm Ready can help communities save lives. On behalf of the National Weather Service, I want to present this letter of commendation, and Zach's got it up here on the screen now, so that'll work. Is this me, Zach, or is this... Oh, yeah, this is your screen, okay. So I'll just read a couple lines from this. We congratulate the town of Cape Carteret on your Storm Ready recognition. Your dedication efforts really showed through over the last year. This designation lasted for three years. The certification went into effect on September 15th, so you've got three years with this. As recognized community, you can use the logo on your homepage and letterheads, brochures, and things like that. The big benefit for people in the community, if the town participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, you're eligible for 25 insurance, or insurance services, iOS community rating points. So again, we'd like to crack, congratulate the staff and the town of Cape Carteret for your efforts in the program. And we presented this to Zach and the mayor a couple weeks ago, and we took a picture out by one of the signs. So really appreciate your hard work on this. I want to thank Mike Bishop as well for helping us with this. We started this process last September, finished in March, and then we all know what happened. So eventually, we had to go forward and do it the virtual way. So Zach and Mike, I really appreciate your efforts, and Mr. Mayor, thank you for helping us out with this. And again, you all have a copy of this, you also have one sign to put up in the community, and you go ahead and order more as you see fit.
Thanks, Eric, we sure do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wanna echo that, you know, thank you to Eric and to the National Weather Service for working with us through the process, and you know, it's great to have the relationship that we do with the National Weather Service Office here. Great community partners, they do a lot of outreach in the community, which is great to see, so really commend them on their effort and being a great community partner. So just wanna thank them again, and also, once again, thank Mike Bishop for his efforts and helping guide us through this process and to work alongside. You know, excited to achieve this on behalf of the town and continue to improve our storm readiness.
Well, thank you again, we appreciate the partnership and an extra happiness for me, because I'm a town... Well, thank you again, we appreciate the partnership and, uh, uh, extra happiness for me because I'm a town resident as well, so pretty cool driving through the town seeing that sign, uh, when it gets put up.
Awesome. Alright, with that said, we'll move on to the, uh, added agenda item, which is the proclamation, if you would, sir. I have the woman in the truck come in, the lady from the Friends of the Library, there will be proclamations. Her come in, if y'all just bear with us a second. And, uh, she'll come in and, and offer that. Hello?
Hi.
If you would, just you can stand right there in front of podium and, uh, the board is right in front of you, I think that everybody's online, where are you? So just start whenever you're ready. And I'm going to put this here so we can hear you better. Go right ahead.
Good evening, um, my name is Helen Aitken and I am a lifetime member of the Friends of the Western Carteret Library. And I have submitted information for the week of October eighteen through twenty-four, twenty twenty, to be designated as the Friends of the Western Carteret Public Library Week. And as a member of, uh, the, um, community, I think that this is a, a wonderful, uh, proclamation to give to the, to the Friends because they recommend and promote our library that supports not only Cape Carteret, but the western part of Carteret County, confirming that our library is the cornerstone of the community. Also, whereas the Friends acknowledge that our library provides opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to the present. Whereas the Friends raise funds to augment Carteret County funding to build the Western Carteret Public Library in two thousand and three and add the Children's and Youth Wing in two thousand and eleven, and then add the Annex in two thousand and nineteen. Whereas the Friends continue to raise money, enabling our library to move from good to great, providing resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for the children and adult reading program, the children's summer towing, storytelling festivals, and special events through the year. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance to well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. Whereas the Friends gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Cape Carteret proclaim October eighteen through twenty-four, twenty twenty, as the Friends of the Western Carteret Public Library Week in Cape Carteret, Carteret County, North Carolina, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Western Carteret Public Library and thank them for all that they do to make our library and community so much better. And this was submitted by me, Helen Aitken, Friends of the Western Carteret Public Library Lifetime Member.
Well, thanks so much, we appreciate it. I'm not sure this is my first proclamation, but I guess I don't understand the motion to accept this proclamation. Mr. Waters, the base of the votes, grab a second.
A second.
Who was that, who's second?
Jim.
Jeff, okay. Alright, I'm going to get a vote, roll call vote, so Commissioner Waters, is it yes? Commissioner King?
Yes.
Mr. Martin? Still there, Mr. Martin? He's having trouble, we'll, we'll come back to him. Uh, Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
And we'll come back to Commissioner Martin, Mr. Martin, are you there? Yes. Yeah, thank you, we got you then. Motion passed unanimously, and I'll be happy to sign that for you, and we are going to make that, uh, declaration as of this moment, how's that? And we're so happy to have the library in our town, I think it's an awesome asset to our community. And thank you for taking your time this evening to bring the proclamation.
Thank you.
Y'all have a wonderful evening. Alright, so next up on the agenda, we're going to move the boom truck up, so in case Mr. Martin lost, uh, his connection, we could at least get that important issue resolved. So Zach, I'm going to turn it back over to you.
Alrighty, can y'all see that on your screen, remember?
No. You're a little slow there, still got the proclamation.
Got a little delay on it, can y'all see it now in the boardroom?
I can see it.
Mayor Baker, can you see it on the screen?
Yes, it is now, it is now, uh, everybody, I think, has the ability to see it.
Alright, go ahead, we'll go ahead and, uh, get started then. The town has seen a substantial increase in the volume of yard debris that has been generated as a result of the various COVID nineteen protective measures that have been in place over the past several months. The increase in yard waste volume is attributable to people working from home and having additional time on their hands to work in their yards. When Hurricane Isaias impacted the area in August, uh, the increase in yard waste volume was further compounded. Since federal public assistance funding has not been approved following Hurricane Isaias, many residents had to take their debris to local convenience sites or they are currently storing their debris on their property waiting for a future pickup. The town has a large elderly population who are at high risk for exposure to COVID nineteen. Requiring these town residents to haul their debris to a convenience site may unnecessarily expose vulnerable residents to COVID nineteen at the convenience site. Some residents have opted to burn their debris, which is detrimental to air quality in our town. As COVID nineteen is a respiratory illness, the inflammatory impact of smoke may further exacerbate COVID nineteen symptoms and result in negative health outcomes for affected individuals. The town has historically utilized a backhoe and the F four fifty truck to remove debris. However, the increased volume of yard waste as a result of COVID nineteen and Hurricane Isaias has made this volume, just in the line there, uh, for the town to purchase a knuckle boom truck to efficiently and effectively remove the yard debris from the town's roadways. The town has two viable funding sources that can be leveraged towards the purchase of a knuckle boom truck, which are summarized below, uh, which would be the surplus from Hurricane Four and Small Project funding, which is eighty-two thousand and twenty-three dollars. And then the CARES Act funding, um, which the remaining portion that we have not utilized is forty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars. Uh, these two funding sources would cover a hundred twenty-nine thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars of the cost of the knuckle boom truck. The cost for a new knuckle boom truck through the North Carolina Sheriff's Association pricing is a hundred forty-eight thousand. Therefore, the town would need to pull eighteen thousand one hundred and five dollars from the undesignated fund balance for the purchase of the knuckle boom truck. So a budget amendment would be necessary and would read as follows, uh, to add the following revenues, which would be the CARES Act funding, uh, which is forty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars, the FEMA public assistance funding, which was ninety-eight thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and fifty-three cents. The transfer from undesignated fund balance, which would be eighteen thousand one hundred and five dollars, which brings us to a total of a hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred thirty dollars and fifty-three cents. And then the following expenditures would need to be added to the environmental and emergency preparation department, which would be CARES Act expenses, one thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars, knuckle boom truck expenses, a hundred forty-eight thousand, and hurricane expenses, sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-three cents, which brings it to a total of a hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred thirty dollars and fifty-three cents, which, uh, the revenues and expenditures both match. Um, oh, here's an additional breakdown of what goes into those expenditures. Um, the CARES Act expenses so far have been one thousand six hundred seventy-nine dollars. The knuckle boom portion of the CARES Act would be forty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars. The knuckle boom portion of the FEMA public assistance fund would be eighty-two thousand twenty-three dollars. Uh, the knuckle boom, um, undesignated fund balance transfer would be eighteen thousand one hundred and five, and the FEMA projects would be sixteen thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. The requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving the purchase of a knuckle boom truck and to approve budget amendment twenty twenty dot twenty twenty-one dot three. And the attached documents are the budget amendment, which is twenty twenty dot twenty twenty-one dot three, as well as some of the supporting documentation, here's the quote from Carolina Environmental Systems. And it's got some of the specifics on the truck, um, this truck is identical to what is utilized over in Emerald Isle. Um, and I also have, uh, this evening, I believe, um, Adam is in, uh, in Sandy's office, um, for the Public Works Department, if there's any questions for the Public Works Department on this item, but if, uh, there's no further questions, um, that's everything for this, uh, segment of the presentation.
Thank you, Zach, and I will entertain a motion to, uh, put into effect to purchase the knuckle boom mower and make the budget amendment necessary. I'll make that motion, Mayor Baker. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Waters seconded, and I'll open it up for discussion. Commissioner Miller, would you like to start?
Yeah. Did you call one of them, Mayor?
Uh, Commissioner Miller, I was going to let him out the floor.
I have a couple of questions.
Forgive me, Steve, Steve, you go ahead.
Yes, um, uh, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I, I would like, I, I would like to start by saying that three years ago, when I was campaigning for, uh, a seat on the Board of Commissioners, my number one goal was to obtain a knuckle boom truck for this town. It's long overdue. Uh, we need to be self-sufficient when it comes to leap and limb, which leap and limb pickup is our single most popular service that we offer our citizens. Uh, we recently had to drop our pickups from four to two because of both budget woes. We were very fortunate to work a, a bargain, not a bargain, but a deal with Emerald Isle. Uh, they stepped forward and, 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 and agreed to, uh, pick our, uh, debris up for a, uh, very nominal fee. It's worked great, but it's long overdue, in my opinion, and time to buy our own truck. Uh, I would like to ask Zach, uh, Zach, two things. Uh, um, my understanding is you have located a debris dump site and worked out a, uh, an arrangement with those people, and also, uh, this, this particular truck does require CDL license, I, I'm assuming that, uh, you, you would, uh, get all three of your public works guys a CDL license, is that correct, Zach?
Yes, yeah, that, both of those points are correct, and that would be our goal to get, uh, all three of our public works staff, um, their CDL licenses.
Okay. My, my final, my final say is, it, this is a golden opportunity for our town to be self-sufficient when it comes to leap and limb and no longer have to rely on anybody to do this service for us. And, uh, I applaud Zach for, uh, coming up with a solution for the funding, which has always been the issue, uh, I was met with stiff resistance from day one when I was sworn in as a commissioner, that was my, uh, uh, goal was to get that truck and I was met with resistance, and rightfully so, because of budget problems that we had at that time. And I want to applaud Zach for working this out. And, uh, I, I, I'm a yes, I'm a yes for this, uh, knuckle boom, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, uh, Commissioner Miller, how about you now, sorry, I misled you there earlier.
That, that's okay, Mayor, that, a couple of questions, it, one has partially been answered. I understand that our public works people, they'd have to have a CDL license to run the truck. As far as actually operating the equipment, is that something they already know how to do or could quickly learn how to do? I mean, our people could definitely drive this truck and operate the equipment, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm confident that our public work staff would be able to, um, learn how to utilize the equipment when, after Hurricane Dorian came through and we had to, uh, rely on other towns to come in and help us out, um, they got a good level of exposure to how the trucks operate, um, they worked alongside the operators from other municipalities and got to see how it works. Uh, the goal would be to get the truck here to the Public Works Department and they can practice around the Public Works facility before they go for their CDL exam, um, so they can get fully acclimated with the truck, um, before it hits the streets or anything like that.
Okay, my, my second question is, if we were to get this truck, how often would we anticipate using it? I mean, aside from hurricanes or any other major storms where we had to get out, pick up debris, right now, we're doing two debris pickups a year, what would you anticipate on a regular basis of beginning to do as far as debris pickups?
Yeah, I would, I'd anticipate we'd be probably looking, and this would be up to the board to provide a direction on, but, um, what I would anticipate is a quarterly pickup, so we'd be restoring back to the four pickups, um, as opposed to being dropped down to the two, but that, I think, would be beneficial and then there's a lot of different applications that they could utilize this for, um, some municipalities use this when they're cleaning out ditches, um, it's a big help for that, um, you know, there's a number of different, uh, projects, if they go to cut down a tree or anything like that in town, this would be a great asset that they can quickly haul that debris off and transport it to a disposal site, so uh, there's a number of applications that take place outside of the quarterly pickups, but, um, I'd be anticipating probably a quarterly pickup, uh, would be the route we would want to go. I don't, I don't think that we could support or sustain, um, a constant pickup by any means, I think that's, uh, far outside of our capacity, both financially and from a staffing standpoint to do that, but I think uh, our folks could handle a quarterly pickup, um, I think that would be within their capability to do that.
Okay, I, I, I agree with you, okay, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner Naylitz?
Uh, I'm completely in support of this thing, it's, it's one of the few things that almost everyone I've talked to in town brought up as an issue, and, uh, they'll be very enthusiastic with this thing, once it shows up, I'm, I'm in favor.
Alright, Commissioner King?
Yes, a couple of comments, um, actually, I had, uh, got all the literature for a knuckle boom before Steve Martin got on the board and got it before the board, but it never went anywhere. But I'm, uh, pretty emphatic on somewhere between two and four pickups. If we go to what, uh, Emerald Isle does, you're talking about tying up one of our persons, persons full-time, and in addition to that, you're ending up putting a lot more mileage, uh, going out to pick up individual small piles, you put a lot of mileage on your, and use on your equipment, it's unnecessary, so I'm only supportive of, uh, somewhere between two and four pickups. I agree with the ditches, uh, rather than, uh, throwing that up on top of the flatbed, the way they do it now, they'd be able to use this truck to do that. Uh, I have a question, uh, where is the dump site, uh, you know, going to, um, down to Hibbs Road is a long haul, takes a round trip, takes pretty close to an hour, depending how quickly you can get in there. Um, do you have any comment on that, Zach?
Yeah, we've been in discussion with, uh, property owner in Doge, um- Um, I don't want to get too far into any details and overstep anything, but I, it, I think it's a pretty favorable arrangement, um, in terms of what's been discussed. And we have sufficient funding based on the rate they provided to be able to go that route.
How many miles away is that?
Probably five miles, if that.
Okay, so it's, uh, in the neighboring community?
Yeah, yeah, not, not far down the road at all.
Okay, yeah, that, that, that would be, uh, uh, running to Hibbs Road would, uh, really defeat the purpose, and you'd end up having to add staffing to do that. I, I'm supportive of this the way it looks right now.
All right, thank you, Mr. Uh, Commissioner Waters?
Well, I do believe that this is going to be a great asset for our community, uh, seeing the tax dollars at work, uh, actually picking things up that's personal to them out of their yard, so they don't have to move it. On time coming, and I'm so happy to be able to see this happening at this point in time. Um, I'll leave as far as pickup, I think that's something that is going to have to be, uh, gauged as time follows in the future. Uh, but, uh, I'm sure the staff ahead, they'll be able to do so as well. That's all.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Waters. Uh, I'll just add a little two cents worth. That's one of the biggest things people approach me about is wanting to have, uh, the brush pickups increased. So this is going to be awesome, especially for, you know, in the bulk of my neighborhood especially. I think the average age is 112. So it's, it's really tough, and a lot of, a lot of the older constituents we have that don't have the ability or trailers or trucks to haul this stuff off. I think we're doing a good thing for our citizens here. And so with that, I will make a roll call vote. I'll start with Commissioner Waters. Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner King?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, now, I think we're back to our regularly scheduled show. And, uh, we'll pick up with the staff updates, Zach.
All righty, y'all. All right. All righty, so go ahead and run through a couple of things, uh, as we talked about earlier. Um, you know, very pleased to, to share that we've, you know, earned that storm-ready, uh, community designation. So here's the picture we took out there at the, uh, town sign. And as of this afternoon, the, uh, storm-ready sign is up there as you enter into Cape Carteret, coming down Highway 24. So we're gonna be getting two more signs to put up. Um, so something really proud of, very excited for, and, uh, something that, uh, you know, definitely be an asset for this community. Um, as Eric had mentioned, one of the additional benefits is that, you know, there's a discount that comes on, uh, people's blood insurance, I believe, for the CRS program. So this is, uh, an additional benefit to the residents that we've been able to earn this designation. Um, want to also share that we've got, uh, eight new picnic tables that have been distributed to the, uh, town parks. Um, Ryerson Unlimited, uh, crafted these tables for us and, uh, did a great job. Um, so gotten a lot of compliments and good feedback on that. So, um, all of those picnic tables forever do for replacements. So really glad that we were able to get that done. Um, also, if you've been, uh, driving through town at night, uh, might have seen the, uh, decorations that we have up for Halloween on either side of town. So, uh, something new that we're doing this year, uh, something kind of cool for the kids, especially with all the, uh, COVID-19 stuff going on right now. Just wanted to provide something, uh, people can enjoy as they're driving through Cape Carteret. Um, such based on the times for Halloween, it'll be on October 31st from 6:00 to 8:30 PM for trick-or-treating. If, uh, folks are not interested in participating, we encourage them to turn their front porch lights off. Uh, the town does not endorse, um, or support, uh, trick-or-treating one way or another. So we're not in favor or opposed, but we do ask that everybody, uh, adhere to the NCDHHS guidelines and the CDC guidelines, uh, keep their social distance, wear masks, um, and take all the, uh, necessary precautions as indicated by, uh, Department of Health and Human Services to, uh, stay safe out there. Um, gonna be putting out the RFP for the, uh, fall paving project, um, this week. So that'll be going out. Um, well, up here at Town Hall, we're handing out, uh, goody bags for Carteret Craving Electric Company. So those are up there at the front door. It's for their annual membership meeting, which is taking place, um, online this year. Uh, we did a poll for a movie in the park. Um, it looks like, uh, Ghostbusters, uh, was the winner on that. So, uh, once we work out some logistics, we'll be announcing a date for that. It'll be a drive-in movie where everybody remains in their vehicles and socially distanced. But once again, something for the kids to do and for the adults as well. Um, we're gonna be limited on space, so we'll be issuing, um, a set number of tickets. Uh, they'll be free, but just that way that we have a good idea for how many people we can fit in there, and we don't create a traffic jam. Um, the CPA has everything ready to go, uh, for the auditor to come in. So I want to thank Sandy for her hard work on that. And, uh, we'll be giving more updates on that, um, after we get the visit from the auditor. Um, we've launched a video series in Cape Carteret, which is called Discovering Cape Carteret. So each week, we're gonna feature one of the town parks. Uh, we started off with Easy Street, uh, last week, and I'll be moving on to another park this week. So the goal is to raise awareness about the different parks that we have here in town, um, and also to provide something for folks who are, who are, um, staying at home to kind of, uh, enjoy and to take their mind off of the, uh, the times we're going through right now. Um, and then finally, we'll need to set a public hearing, uh, or not a public hearing, a meeting time and date for the, um, public hearing, um, that we're gonna discuss this evening if those, um, move on to that stage in the process. So, um, just, uh, we, we can discuss that at the end of the meeting, um, and set a time, um, sometime this week, at least 24 hours after the meeting time, uh, where the board can reconvene, um, as is usually done after a public hearing and discuss the, uh, and vote on those items. So, uh, that's everything I've got for my update. Oh, I guess the final thing would be, um, this is over in Bay Shore. As, uh, Mr. Truax mentioned, they, they were working on Lejeune Road today. So want to commend our Public Works Department. They've tried to, uh, get asphalt every day. They're kind of at the mercy of the asphalt plant when they're making that particular mix. So they were able to put down the binder today, and they'll be putting a finish coat over that. So they did a great job on this. Um, they really have been trying to get that asphalt out there as soon as possible. So we appreciate everybody's patience, um, while they've been working on it. And you see they're here on, uh, Voguestown Drive, tamping the asphalt down. So, um, just appreciate everybody's patience. So, like I said, it's, it's outside of our control. Um, whenever they're making the mix, they go right up there and they get it, bring it back. Um, but just want to thank our Public Works Department for their hard work on this and for, uh, getting the roads repaired. Uh, one of the capabilities we have now that we have an asphalt, um, kettle to transfer the asphalt is that we can do much larger projects. So I anticipate in the, uh, coming months, we're gonna be able to tackle a lot more potholes and cover a lot more of the roads in town. So really gonna be a great benefit to the town and to the residents, um, because I expect that the condition of the roads will continue to improve and that we'll be able to tackle the small potholes before they turn into large potholes. So, um, just want to provide everybody with an update on that. But, um, with that, I'll hand up back, hand it back over to, uh, Mayor Baker.
Zach, yeah, you called me earlier, and that's, that's, that's the problem with paving is you're at the emergency of, the mer, excuse me, you're at the mercy of these paving companies, and I think they've got a huge contract right now with a special mix just for the, uh, what's going on at the airport, doing those runways, and that's not what we want to see. So hopefully they'll get the I-2 back on. But he put down binder, that binder's good stuff. So, uh, he just come back and put a little overlay when they finally get back to it. I think that'll be awesome. All right, so with that being held, next up is the public hearing regarding the zoning of 106 Manatee Street from B-10 to B-20. And as you all heard, the, uh, we had a couple of public comments from Mr. McHale, and, uh, there are concerns about it going to B-20. And so with that, um, let's see.
Yeah, and what I'll do real quick, um, let me just pull up my email. All right, just wanted to share this. Um, I know one of the concerns that was brought up was whether or not there was signage that was posted. Just wanted to provide some background and show that, um, we did post signage on both, uh, sides of those lots. Um, so there was signage posted both on Bonita and on Manatee Street for both of those lots. So just wanted to make sure that we covered that, um, and addressed that concern that was brought up. Um, I believe the other question was about what kind of uses were allowed. Um, if the board would like, we can pull up the table of permitted uses and go through that if we need to. Um, but if not, I'll go ahead and jump into the, uh, memo and present the item. Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. All right, so the property owner of 106 Manatee Street has submitted a rezoning request to change the zoning of their property from B-10 commercial to B-20 commercial. The minimum square footage for lots in the B-20 commercial zoning district is 20,000 square feet. The subject property is 27,000 square feet. The adjacent property to the north is zone B-20 commercial, and there is an active rezoning request for 108 Manatee Street to the south to change the zoning from R-13 residential to B-20 commercial. The planning board action on the item is that the planning board voted five to zero on October 6th, uh, 2020 to provide a favorable recommendation of the proposed rezoning to the Board of Commissioners. The Camel Land Use Plan Statement of Consistency is that the proposed rezoning is consistent with 4.2.7 Areas of Local Concern, Policy 3 of the Cape Carteret Land Use Plan. The requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving the proposed rezoning of 106 Manatee Street from B-10 commercial to B-20 commercial. And so that, since we're doing this in a hybrid fashion, um, with some of the commissioners online and some here in person, um, we'll have to have the actual vote take place at a later meeting date, um, which I, I guess we can set at the end of the meeting. Um, but at, at this time, then, uh, the mayor can go ahead and open up the public hearing on the item.
All righty, is there anybody online, I guess, that would like to, um, speak on that, I guess, is the way we need to do it right now. And if I'm right, and they'd like to say we'll vote on it when I call for a motion, then after we vote on it, we gotta come back, uh, at a later date after we've had the 24-hour, uh, response also, correct, Zach?
Yeah, so the only thing you need to vote on, I believe, is to open the, and Brett can correct me if I'm wrong on that, but the only thing you'll have to vote on this evening is to open the public hearing and then to close the public hearing if there's no comment. And then the actual vote on the item will be, will take place later in the week when we have the follow-up meeting.
Okay, all right then, then I will entertain a motion to go to the, uh, public comment.
Yeah, so move.
Okay, I have a second?
A second.
All right, and I'll do a roll call vote for that, and I'll start.
What was that motion? I, I didn't hear it, Mayor.
To go into the public comment section, or public hearing, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I was just gonna ask you how your vote was going. I'm gonna start with you.
Yeah, I'm okay with the, uh, yes, I'm going into public hearing.
Okay, Commissioner Waters? Is it yes? Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
All right, so that's five to oh, then we will open it up. Is there anybody online who would wish to speak, Zach? I'll let you take control of that, anybody that wishes to speak. I would just like to reiterate, we had, uh, Susan Hall, who voiced her concerns earlier, and, uh, Mr. McHale, who showed up here, who's also concerned. And, uh, y'all, y'all heard his comments.
All right, I'll, uh, press the unmute all button. So if you'd like to speak on the item, you're unmuted. At least on our end.
Zach, I believe that Paxton and Bubba wanted to talk about it. I don't know if they're still in the parking lot.
Yeah, um, let me run out there and see.
I'll do it, Zach, I'm right here.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we, we have, we have Mrs. Holtz here who would like to speak in person. So I'm gonna turn it over to her now.
Thank you, sir.
Right ahead, ma'am.
All right, I have brought a letter from the next-door neighbor, Laura McLean Foulter, who says, "On October 6th, 2020, I am simply in favor of Paxton rezoning her property on Manatee, 106, for McLean Foulter." That has been turned in, but I will leave a copy here for the plan. And I, I am speaking in favor of the rezoning of 108 Manatee from R-13 to B-20, for my brother, who wants to put his office beside me. And if he wants the flexibility of B-20, I'm all for that. And I only apply it myself because I don't want to be B-10 between to B-20. I don't think there's anything to be afraid of. We don't want to go any further south. Um, I think it would be a good use of the property to be able to develop it in the B-20. And the fact that my brother owns the lots to the south to protect the neighborhood, two lots deep, both on Manatee and Bonita, should speak to the fact that there is protection. And I'm, I'm definitely in favor of it. Plus, the property across Bonita Street also belongs to our sister Laura Foulter, and she's in favor of this reset. And we ask that you please consider it. After the town bought my property, the property now across the street from my office is B-20. So it would just solidify the zone and make it consistent. But thank you for your consideration and your patronage.
Thank you.
All right, so. Hey, guys. Well, we, we have, yeah, sorry, Barbara McLean, 507 Deer Creek Drive. And I'm here tonight. We've got the, uh, two properties that we just had combined and would like to, uh, request them to be rezoned from R-13 to B-20. Any question?
What, nobody's talking to Mr. McHale out there?
Yeah. Yeah, so I did talk to two people that live on Bonita and Neptune, Manatee and Neptune. And their concerns were that we were gonna put in a restaurant or something, um, you know, not pleasant to a residential community. And, and as of right now, my only plans are to move, and, and this could be a year or two years, move the little office over here across from the handy mart and put up a, some type of garage for, uh, you know, a backhoe or bush hog or something like that. Under no circumstances are we interested or would ever entertain a restaurant or, um... Now, I have kicked around the idea of trying to attract a friendly market-type business to town. This is not a desirable location, that's more of a 24 location. Honestly, we have, uh, intended to use it for office and as a storage building. But, but yeah, I did talk to both of them. We, we happen to disagree, um, which is fine. The other thing I would tell you is we own the four lots, uh, south of this property. So if there's any devalue- We live here, we love this community, we don't want to do anything to harm it or anybody in.
Any board members have any questions? Any board members have any questions for Mr. McLean, why is here about this property and this rezoning? All right, now I guess, uh, thank you. All right, was there anybody online that had anything else they would like to comment before we close? If not, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing and go back to the regular session. I have a motion from Commissioner Waters. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner King, and now I will do a roll call vote again. I'll start with Mr. Waters, who says yes. Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
And did I miss anybody? Commissioner Miller? I think I said that, did I? Is that everybody? I lost count, sorry. Naylitz, I said Commissioner Naylitz, right? Okay. All right, so that carries five to oh. We're back in the regular session, and we'll do this all again. So I'll entertain a motion to do a public hearing regarding the rezoning of 108 Manatee Street. Do I have a motion?
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Do I have a second? Commissioner Waters, second to that, so I'll start once again with Commissioner Waters, who says yes. Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
And Commissioner King?
Yes.
All right, we are now opening the public hearing. We've already heard from Mrs. Holtz, unless somebody had any questions for her from the board regarding this. Is there anybody online who would like to comment? Well, wait a minute. All right, no comments. I'll entertain a motion to come out of the public hearing regarding zoning of 108 Manatee.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. Do I have a second?
Second, King.
Thank you, Commissioner King, and I'll start with you, Commissioner King.
Yes.
On the regular, on the vote? Yes, for King, okay. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters? Give me a thumbs up, yes. All right, so now we're back into the regular session. So Zach, do we need to vote on these two now, or do we wait till after the public comment and then do a vote at the next meeting?
Yeah, so we'll wait the 24-hour window for anybody to submit written comments on this matter, and then the, I guess, when we get to the commissioner comments at the end, we'll check everybody's schedule for the week, and we can go ahead and set a follow-up meeting where this will be discussed.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
It would be appropriate, with all the people that have talked on this and the people that are looking at this online, for the commissioners to discuss this in a meeting that people came to attend based on this topic being on rather than some meeting down the road. And I understand that, is it a vote and a second vote, Zach, or is it just one vote 24 hours after the hearing?
It would just be one vote on each of these rezonings 24 hours after the board meeting.
Well, I would entertain that we do this discussion tonight while everybody's here, and people are here to listen for it rather than have it some other day when people won't be here to hear the discussion.
Well, we can, without a motion, if you'd like to, I mean, privilege of the board, if you'd like to, if you'd like to open up the discussion, we can do that.
Mr. Mayor, I would like Brett, our town attorney, to weigh in on that and see if that's appropriate.
Yeah.
Yeah, what my suggestion would be is that we wait until after the 24 hours because for the discussion, because of course your discussion may change, given additional comments that can be received in the interim. With that said, then usually discussions are made after a motion and a second, which would not be appropriate tonight because of the 24-hour rule.
Okay, that makes sense, and so we'll wait until after the public comment, and we detect the next date that we will vote on it then. Thank you, Commissioner Martin.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you couldn't make the motion but not vote on it, you know, to get the discussion while people are here listening on this subject?
Well, I think I'm going to take the advice of council, and we're going to just wait. And there again, I agree that probably best that way we can get the public comments in if we have anything in writing and bring that all to bear, and that might, may change some people's comments, so I would, I'm going to stick with what the attorney is suggesting.
If I could add also, we're going to publicly state tonight, before we close this meeting, when we're going to come back virtually to have this discussion and vote. So the people that are listening tonight, they'll have the opportunity to log back in and listen that time also. It won't be a closed session, it'll be open also.
That is correct, Commissioner. That is correct. So that way we're giving everybody as much opportunity as possible, you know, to have their voice heard. So with that, we shall move on then to item number 10, which is the Bee City USA Resolution.
All righty, thank you, Mayor Baker. The town of Cape Carteret is in the process of applying for the designation of a Bee City USA community. Bees and pollinators play a critical role in our food chain, and 90% of the world's flowering plants rely on pollination to reproduce. One in three bites of food that we consume relies on pollination. Declining bee populations pose a substantial threat to agriculture and to our delicate ecosystem. In an effort to protect bee and pollinator populations in our community, the town of Cape Carteret has sought the Bee City USA designation. One of the steps that is required in the application process is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a resolution designating the town of Cape Carteret as a Bee City USA affiliate. The town is currently engaged in a variety of ongoing efforts to improve habitats for pollinators in our community, which include planting pollinator-friendly plants in the Cape Carteret Community Garden and Park, planting pollinator-friendly plants at town parks, reducing and minimizing the use of pesticides and herbicides by our Public Works Department. We have made a transition to utilizing vinegar-based weed killers and are phasing out the use of any Roundup or other harmful chemicals, so that's something that we've done in recent years and made that transition. Future efforts may include partnerships with local groups, educational outreach efforts, and expansion of pollinator-friendly plantings in the town to provide additional food sources for bees and other pollinators. And the requested action is for the Board of Commissioners to consider approving the proposed resolution designating the town of Cape Carteret as a Bee City USA affiliate, and the attachment is the Bee City USA Resolution.
All right, do I have a motion to accept this resolution to become a Bee City USA?
I'll make that motion.
All right.
King, second.
Thank you, Commissioner King, and now I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner King?
Can we have discussion, please?
Yes, absolutely.
I'd like to add something to this. When I received the agenda for tonight, I have to say that I was shocked to see this on the agenda and very happy to see this. I'd like my fellow commissioners to hear me out here. I had no idea Zach was doing this. I want to quote a few facts on bees here, if I may. Albert Einstein quoted, "If bees disappeared off the face of the earth, the human race would only have four years left to live." One-third of all the food we eat rely on bees for pollination. 80% of the United States crop is dependent on honeybees. Bees pollinate the cotton, which we make our clothes with, and they also pollinate the clover and alfalfa, which feed the cattle. I have personally set aside, I want to let Zach know that prior to moving to Cape Carteret full-time, I was a beekeeper. I had 17 hives of bees, very proud to do my part and understand the situation that our honeybees are in, and it's not good. Anything that we can do to help that, I am highly in favor of. Things like planting a bee-friendly garden, maybe partnering with a garden club to achieve that, and to support our local beekeepers association, or maybe even whether you have a bee hive or not. When I moved down here full-time, I had three pickup truck loads of beekeeping equipment, and I donated it to the Oslo County Beekeepers Association. Once again, I applaud Zach for his efforts to make our town a more environmental-friendly town, and I can't think of anything in this world more important to us and our bees. And I ask anybody listening tonight to take the time to research how important bees are to the human race. Thank you, Zach, so much.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Miller, do you have any comments?
I don't have any comments.
Commissioner King?
Yes, I'll be much briefer than Steve, but my pop kept bees, and they are, they are a handful to take care of, and especially with the hardships in more recent years, but he kept them for years and years and years, and I, it's just, I support any effort to improve the plight of the bees in this country. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Naylitz?
I've always been a big fan of honeybees and wondered why I don't see very many honeybees in this neck of the woods. I see bongo bees, all kinds of wasps, hornets, and others. Bees, not honeybees, very few. So anything we can do to increase them, I'm in favor of. I do have one question, and notice that it said in the resolution, I believe, that next year, when we give them a report on what we've done, we have the opportunity to renew our, I guess, membership or status, but a fee will be involved. What fee is that? Is there a fee now?
Yeah, I think the fee, I know it's less than $100, I'm going to say it's like $85 or something like that per year.
That's all.
I assume that fee goes to the bees. Commissioner Waters? Mr. Miller and I just have to pretty much echo everything Commissioner Martin said. A good friend of mine is keeping bees right up Highway 58, and they just started, I think, two years ago, so they're just really getting good and started with it, so definitely want to do anything we can to encourage people to do that. If you have any questions about it, we have a great extension up here for the county that also promotes the bees. So with that, I will do a vote. I'll start with Commissioner Martin.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Commissioner King?
Yes, and I'd like to comment for Jim's benefit that his neighbor two doors down has a number of hives down by his seawall, probably six or eight of them, right next door to you.
Never seen them.
That's a yes.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
And Commissioner Waters? Is a yes. Motion carries five to zero. Next up is the closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11, and that is the to meet about acquisition of real property. So do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion to go into closed session?
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Waters, okay. Commissioner Waters also second. So we'll do a roll call vote, which is I'll start with Commissioner Waters. Is it yes? Commissioner Naylitz?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
I'm a yes, but Zach, I need the phone number or for you to tell me how to access the closed session.
Okay, yeah, I think we're probably going to take a brief recess. Mayor Baker's okay with that, I'll send that during that time.
Oh, you're going to text that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'll text it and also send it to your email.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm a yes.
Okay. Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
All right, we will, we'll take a brief recess, let everybody get acclimated, and Zach can make sure everybody's got the right address for us to go meet, and then we'll meet back here when we come back in the regular session. So if you're watching, just hang tight, we will be back. We've got our commission reports coming up, and so you don't want to miss that. So stick around. Thank you, people. We're now entering closed session.